This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this meeting is now called to order at 6:31 PM on December 16th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together, that'd be great. Please leave your mics on during this time. So Sarah, can you unmute everybody? Including yourself? Actually, you don't need to be on, I guess. Sharon and Dennis, if you can unmute yourselves. Thank you.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Allegiance, please? Sorry, roll call, please. I'm not awake.
Thank you. Commissioner Nutbrock?
Present.
Commissioner Workman? He's not on. So I'll mark him as absent. Commissioner Smith? Same thing. He is also absent. Commissioner Elko Sherry?
Present.
Chairperson McLean?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, first up we have is the approval of the meeting minutes for November 9th. Do we have any updates?
From November 9th as published.
Was that a motion? Sorry.
Yes, I move that we approve the minutes from 9th November as published.
I'll second.
All in favor to approve the meeting minutes from November 9th as published? Say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Motion carries to approve the meeting minutes for November 9th. All right. Next up is the public comment. Do we have? We don't have anybody else on the phone tonight, do we?
No, we do not. And I did not receive any via email either.
Okay. So we'll open the public here, our public comment, and then close it at 6:34 PM. I just wonder if we should give it a whole, full minute or not. Okay. Next up, we have public hearings. We have the building height code update. All right, the staff report first.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well, enjoying the holidays. Nice to round the year out with a discussion of building height. It's very festive. So we started talking about this a couple of months ago, September. So I think we're in either the third or fourth month of talking about the building height definition. I won't go into too much background about it. I think the most important thing to realize is just that the origin of this particular code update goes back to matching this definition to what's in the International Building Code. So you don't have two ways to measure building height. And so, you know, there's been quite a bit of discussion with the Planning Commission about the proposed definition and some of the ambiguity of the terms. And so kind of where we landed last month was that I recommended that staff prepare an administrative determination of how this new definition of building code would be applied. And we've done that and we've attached it to the staff report as attachment A. It's really just provided for informational purposes. At this point, it's not a final determination or, sorry, interpretation because the new definition of building height has not been adopted. So we can't really finalize the interpretation until that happens. But essentially, you know, the crux of the issue was this term in the definition, average height of the highest roof surface, which was creating some, you know, confusion and that leading to a need to clarify exactly what that means. Because further down in the definition, it talks about establishing grade plane, which is the elevation you measured from along the ground, average elevation you measure from along the ground to the top of the building. And Dennis and Sharon, I also pointed out that that phrase is a little bit confusing because it seems to imply different points on the roof, measuring and averaging different points on the roof rather than on the ground. And so the interpretation then kind of clears that up, that it's really, you average several points on the ground to establish grade plane and then you measure to a single point, the highest point of the roof. And that's how the building official applies the definition. So, you know, at this point, staff is recommending that Planning Commission open the public hearing, accept any public comments, and then forward the recommendation of approval of City Council of the proposed definition to building height. So with that, I'll short staff report on that tonight. I'll open it up if there's any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing. Then, you know, I'll be happy to take those.
Ethan, this is Dennis. Where does this interpretation reside in the city records? And how does someone know that such an interpretation exists?
Dennis, you're always asking good questions, dang it. Sarah, I don't, maybe Sarah, you're better to answer this question. But I mean, is there a place where the city files interpretations? I mean, sometimes Dennis, these interpretations reside in staff reports. Like for instance, I know there's interpretation of density that goes back a couple of years on Stevens Hillside Farm. And so it's residing in a project staff report. But one like this that applies more generally, Sarah, I don't know if there's a specific place for those.
So when Commissioner Nutbrock asked, I also thought that was a very good question. And I also have that question now. So I will go and ask Tony because I think Tony might be one of the best with that kind of knowledge. So I will ask him and get back to you because now I'm also curious.
Yeah, I mean, the concern, obviously, Dennis, I think what you're really asking is, you know, what's prevent somebody from missing this and not knowing about it? So I mean, that's a legitimate concern. So unfortunately, something that sounds like we're going to have to get back to you on.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have someplace already, it's something ought to be set up so that future generations, that the thing even exists.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Oops, sorry, cut you off. Sarah, I mean, could it, maybe there's a way to just solve it right here. I mean, could it be as simple as just creating a folder, a physical file somewhere in a filing cabinet there at the city, but also on the network so people know where the interpretations reside?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I'll look on the server to see if there is a folder like that currently. And I'll get something put together.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Just thinking, should we also, are we gonna have in there maybe just a reference to the interpretation as well?
Um, that wouldn't be common practice. I'm just trying to figure out how that would work if you did it. I mean, I suppose you could number the interpretation or something like we do the applications and reference that into the code. But I don't think I've ever seen that before. I'm just trying to think if, maybe there's a reason why. I can ask, what I can do on that is ask Bronson to see if he would think it was, see if he thinks it's a good idea to reference the interpretation in the code. He might say something like, if you do that, then in order to retract the interpretation, you know, if the interpretation changes or something, you have to go back through Planning Commission and City Council because it's specifically referenced. I'm guessing that's what he might say, but I'm happy to check on that with him.
Okay. Any other comments? Sharon, Commissioner Elko Sherry, do you have any quick comments or questions?
No, just in the back of my head, I thought if it was like, you know, if it was part of the billing code and there was like a footnote or something, but I don't know how it's structured now. So I was just gonna hold off on that for now. But thank you for asking.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand what you're saying. A footnote for what?
So if we have like our building code online now, you know, if it's just listed, because I think I've looked it up when I was doing work on my home. And so if you have the building code and if it was just like a footnote, like a, what's it called, like a footer endnote where you have like the numerical reference? And then like that interpretation would be at the bottom or something. But like, I don't know the legal implications of changing like the actual code document.
Yeah, I'll ask that question as well and see what Bronson would recommend. And so, I mean, if that's something that the Planning Commission wants staff to do, I guess what I would say is, in your recommendation, make, in your motion, make a recommendation that staff include some kind of reference to the interpretation if determined appropriate by the city attorney. You're okay with that. And then if he says, good idea, we'll put it in there before it goes to City Council. And if he says, not a good idea, then we won't.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
I'm good. It could be a nice way to reference it and the fact that we have Bronson reviewing it before to make sure it's okay. Makes me feel better.
Right.
I agree. Okay, so I guess we can go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:45 PM. We'll wait a minute and then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then have a motion to approve this for, forwarding to the City Council. I know we don't have anybody on the line. And we didn't get any comments, Sarah?
No, no comments.
And I noticed it was posted under Planning Commission information too, as well as in the agenda, so.
We posted it there and we also, Sarah, I believe we, you sent an email to the builders that the city has on file just to give them an opportunity.
Yes, I did. You're exactly right. And then we posted it at City Hall and at our building.
Okay. So just in case anybody joins late, just give them a minute. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:47 PM. And so do I have a motion to approve the Center municipal code, LCMC 18.40.010, building height code update, along with the interpretation, subject to a footnote with reference to the interpretation of determined appropriate by the city attorney and city staff to add an online file and a file somewhere in the office for people to review it, to be able to review it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
And I will second that.
Okay. Sarah, would you please do a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Nutbrock?
Yes.
Commissioner Elko Sherry?
Aye.
Chairperson McLean?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anybody opposed? None. So motion carries to approve LCMC 18.40.010 as discussed. Next up is SEPA code updates.
All right, so we're also a couple of months into this discussion. And this was originally paired with the building height code update as one item. We've obviously since separated those because anticipated they were moving, would be moving along separate tracks. So, you know, the issue with the SEPA code is that the exemptions don't match up with what's in state law. And so the purpose of this code update would be to match them up, better match them up as well as eliminate items that, exemption items that don't apply in critical areas and some local exemptions that aren't really, you know, part of state law and so that really shouldn't be in there. So we'll just kind of move through this one by one. The first thing I'll say is, this requires a little bit of concentration because the SEPA code is a little bit hard to follow and so is the state, so is the state law about it. And so essentially, what you have is SEPA being required for all projects unless they're exempt in the City of La Center. And that's the case across the state and all jurisdictions. And so there's a standard list of exemptions in state law. And so most jurisdictions adopt those exemptions by reference. And you can't create your own new local exemptions. But there is something called a flexible threshold for minor new construction that you can, that the state gives you just the discretion to adjust. And that's what that first item there under the discussion section is really talking about are the flexible thresholds. So Sarah, if you go to the second page of the staff report, there's a table there and it shows what the city's existing thresholds are for minor new construction. And you see that there in the middle column of the table. So four single-family residential units, four multifamily units, 10,000 square foot agricultural building, or 4,000 square foot and 20 parking spaces for office, school, commercial, recreational, service, storage building, or parking facility. And then lastly, 300 cubic yards of filler excavation. So if you undertake those activities and fall within those thresholds, you don't have to file a SEPA checklist with the city and you don't have to undergo SEPA review. And as I said, the state allows you to increase those thresholds, which is an option that they put in state law back in 2012. So you can increase those thresholds to the amount that's in that right-hand column of the table or anywhere in between, really. So the recommendation then, based upon our analysis, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, is to raise the flexible threshold for filler excavation up to the limit of 1,000 cubic yards. Because, and Sarah, if you scroll down in the staff report until you get to the next table. Yep, that one there, thank you. We completed this analysis last month and we supplemented it more this month. What this does is it goes through each section of the SEPA, which is that left-hand column there, and tells you what other state, federal, or city code covers that item. And then the last column shows you what issues are covered in SEPA that aren't covered in the city's code or state or federal law. So what we're proposing to do again is raise the flexible threshold for fill, grading and fill, cut and fill, to 1,000 cubic yards. Because if you do that, it doesn't really tend to implicate many of these other issues. For instance, housing, since housing's not involved in a grading-only activity, that's not something that would need to get considered. Aesthetics, that usually doesn't come into play either with recreational issues. So that's the reason essentially that we're proposing to raise that threshold. We're not proposing that you raise or that the city raise any of the other thresholds because some of these other issues do come into play. For instance, if we raise the threshold for residential units from four to 30, single-family residential units, then some of those housing issues might come into play and SEPA would be the only way to discuss them because they're not covered in the city's code. So that's the recommendation with regard to flexible thresholds. I'm gonna stop there and take any comments or questions on that or just kind of see if there's an understanding of what we're proposing to do there.
Ethan, I'm trying to understand, try one more time the rationale for raising the fill and excavation.
Yeah, what are the?
Yeah. So, sorry, Dennis, were you trying to say something?
Also, what are some examples? That would be great.
Yeah. I mean, you know, one thing is you don't typically have a grading-only project. I mean, that's pretty uncommon, right? That then you're starting to get into speculative grading where people are trying to grade something for, you know, maybe to prepare their property for sale or something without knowing what the use is. And that's generally not permitted. But you might, you might have, for instance, somebody that does, that applies for a grading permit because they're stockpiling materials on a site from a construction project. And you need to get a grading permit for that. I'm working on a project like that in Clark County right now. So that would be a grading-only project. And so Dennis, the rationale is essentially that grading doesn't warrant consider, let me back up one step, stumbling all over myself here. So number one, the city has grading requirements, right? And so if you exceed those grading, that grading threshold of 50 cubic yards, then the city's own grading requirements come into play. So the issues that are, that grading triggers are covered by the city's requirements. So that's point number one. Point number two is just that typically when you have, you know, if you would have a grading only project, a lot of these other issues like housing, aesthetics, recreation, don't really come into play from just a grading action only. If you grade, that doesn't really create transportation issues. It doesn't really create public service issues if you're just grading, you know, without creating additional demands for public services or utilities. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought that's what you were saying. I just, my, I was looking at from the perspective of the thresholds for residential units, you know, four units, four detached units, you know, there's no, that threshold for SEPA would kick in a lot sooner than 300 or 1,000 cubic yards just because that threshold for housing is just so small.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that could be the case. And so, I mean, if you trigger any, if you have a project that triggers any of the thresholds, then you have to do the SEPA. I mean, like for instance, if you have a, if we raised the flexible threshold to 1,000 cubic yards and you had a, you know, a small subdivision of six lots and it moved less than 1,000 cubic yards of dirt, that would still trigger SEPA because it's above the four units, the four unit threshold.
So I'm okay there. The other thing, the definition here for single-family residential, multifamily residential are in terms of units. And so, you know, we usually use the term dwelling units to be specific. The multifamily residential, four units, does that mean four units of 120 dwelling units? Or is that four dwelling units in a multifamily residential?
Yeah, that's four dwelling units. And that's one we're not proposing to lift.
I'm just wondering if we need to be specific about that definition of units?
Yeah. I mean, we could.
That comes out of the state code.
Yeah, I think essentially what we do is just adopt state code by reference. So we don't even include this full table in the city's code.
Okay, so we're stuck with it.
More or less. I was just gonna verify that while we were talking, but.
Yeah, I'd hate for somebody to come in and make the argument that I'm building these, these four units and each have, you know, 24 dwelling units in them.
Yeah. I mean, one thing, and this might not particularly comfort you, but I mean, these thresholds are used statewide and pretty much everyone that reviews SEPAs know what they're referring to. So it actually does, Dennis, so this is, it's sometimes hard for me to remember every single section of the code, but 18310.090 says that the City of La Center establishes the following exempt levels for minor new construction not occurring in critical areas, four residential dwelling units. And it doesn't even distinguish between single-family or multifamily because, you know, the threshold is the same. But it does say dwelling units.
Okay, good.
So we don't need a definition that says detached units, see dwelling units, something like that?
Oh, there may, I think there's already a definition of dwelling units in the code.
Yeah, but not detached units, so.
I think there is actually of that as well.
Okay, something, just checking.
I'm just double I'm just double checking as well. Yeah, there's a detached dwelling definition. And I believe there's. A dwelling unit. Definition. Yep, yeah, so there's definitions for both of those.
Okay. And what impacts have been there lead by leaving at three hundred cubic yard? What impacts has the city seen that the thousand cubic yards would have changed recently?
Well. I wouldn't say that in particular, we've seen any impacts from that. I think one of the points that we're making to you is that by raising it, there really wouldn't be much of an impact. I mean, you might conceivably. Get that project that I was mentioning where somebody's stockpiling materials on another property. So in that case, that would smooth the process for them and they wouldn't need to go through a CIPA just for that reason alone. But I can't remember offhand a project. You know, that that raising this threshold would would have affected or or changed the outcome of. Simply because it would be so uncommon for. For that type of project grading only to come in the door, but.
I think I'm comfortable, you know, changing that, you know, the three hundred to a thousand, you know, per the recommendations. As I'm hearing it now.
No, I'm likewise okay with it.
I'm okay with it too.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions on that particular section of the staff report, I think we'll back up, Sarah, and kind of go to that second page of this staff report again. Yeah, there we go. So the second issue, this is actually a relatively simple one, and it's probably better just to show you this. On this screen, but in eighteen three ten two thirty two. That section is called local categorical exemptions. And it essentially what it says is that the mayor or his designee can exempt. Certain projects, a type one or type two administrative decision or pre-application reviews. But the problem with that statement is those aren't exemptions that are defined by the state. You can't a jurisdiction can't make up its own exemptions. The other problem with it is that a type one or type two administrative decision, I mean, a type, for instance, a type two administrative decision, that could be a site. A commercial site plan review application of a, you know, of a new grocery store, for instance. Or. A short plat. That that doesn't, you know, four units or less, that doesn't hit some of the other thresholds would be. That that statement would suggest that the the city could completely exempt that project and that's, you know, that wouldn't be in line with state law. And so, I mean, the change for this section is really pretty simple. It's to delete the whole section. For that reason, it just doesn't line up with the state state law. So I don't know if. There's questions on that particular. Section. There it is right there, local categorical exemptions. It's a little bit small, but. Yeah, the the city of La Center shall exempt the following land use reviews from this chapter where the proposed development will not occur wholly or partially on curriculars. Pre-application land use review. And then type one and type two administrative decisions. So that I guess one of the points I didn't make is that preapplication land use review is already exempt. So there's no point in stating that one either because, I mean, you know, people come in for preapplication meetings. It's not like we make them do a CIPA. To to do a preapplication because that's that's really a research activity and there's a specific exemption in state law for. For that. So you really don't need to say that and again, in a different way. So are there any questions on on this?
I'm good with your recommendation.
Yeah, I'm feeling that it not only it seems to contradict state law and gives quite a bit of flexibility where none needed. And then it's somewhat redundant on the on the CIPA part of it. So yeah, I'm okay with the recommendation as well.
I agree.
So then the next topic, Sarah, if you'll scroll back to the. Thank you. Yes, the staff report. This is where it starts getting a little bit confusing. And so. Just to reiterate something I said earlier, there's a standard list of state exemptions for CIPA. And then if you look in the WAC, WAC one ninety seven eleven nine oh eight, it says that. A local jurisdiction can specify certain exemptions that don't apply in critical areas. So it's kind of a double negative there, right? Exemptions that don't apply. So in that case, if the city specified some of those exemptions that don't apply in critical areas. Then someone would have to do CIPA in critical areas for those those specific activities. Does that make sense? Okay. So there's a couple of problems with this code section. One is that at the beginning of it, it starts out by saying that all exemptions don't apply in critical areas. And the problem with that is that WAC one ninety seven eleven nine oh eight doesn't say that all exemptions don't apply in critical areas. It says that that a city can choose some exemptions that don't apply in critical areas, and it's very specific as to which ones. A jurisdiction can choose from. And then if you read further down in this code section, it goes ahead and specifies some of those exemptions that don't apply. So. Again, you have kind of the opening statement that says all exemptions that don't apply, all exemptions don't apply in critical areas. And then further down, you have a statement that goes ahead and specifies which exemptions don't apply. So it's a little confusing reading that. As to, you know, whether whether if you just went by that code only if all exemptions don't apply in critical areas or just some. So that that's problem number one. Problem number two is when when the code talks about the exemptions that don't apply, it doesn't match up with. The numbering system in the WAC. So. That's problem number two. Problem number three is. That the list of things that don't of exemptions that don't apply in critical areas doesn't make any sense. And it includes things like sale of a property. I think it says adminis- it might say administrative decisions. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, purchase and sale of a property. Sarah, if you'll scroll down again, just so I can refresh myself a little bit. Right there, that last paragraph. Repair, remodeling and maintenance activities, purchase or sale of real property. Short plats within the original short subdivision boundaries. So. I guess the question is. Why would you say that somebody has to go get a CIPA for selling a property? There's no impacts there. So the so the list of things that were specified in that section doesn't make sense, and it's almost like. The it was written without an understanding of of what. WAC one ninety seven eleven nine oh eight was trying to do. So we went through all of those. Those. The list of things that the state says that you exemptions that the state says that a jurisdiction can choose from that don't apply in critical areas. So Sarah, I'm gonna have you. Scroll down past the staff report. There's. The we've included the WAC past this. So here's the, yes, here it is. The here's the list of standard exemptions in state law, and so it runs for, you know, like another couple pages here. And we've highlighted the things that the state allows you to choose from. That. That if you choose, if you choose these things, these exemptions will not apply in critical areas. Minor new construction, we talked about that a little bit earlier. And that's, you know, that's the four residential units. The commercial of ten thousand square feet or less. Parking of twenty spaces or less, so forth. So you could say that the exemption for that does not apply in critical areas. Sarah, keep scrolling down. Let's see here, wait. Other minor new construction. And there's a list of that stuff that you could choose from. It gets. You know, it gets a little bit hard to sort of weed through this, but that's exactly what we did. And we selected the things, not not the highlighted things. We selected from the highlighted things, the things that we thought would have more impact in critical areas. And so we ended up recommending that minor new construction not be exempted in critical areas. And we also end up recommending that some of the list of things under other minor new construction not be exempted in critical areas. But all of the rest of this would be exempt. So Sarah, keep scrolling down. So repair and remodeling, purchase and sale of property, those would all be exempt in critical areas. Keep going, Sarah, please. Land use decisions. Oh, right, the licenses to operate or engage in amusement devices, you know, so basically like a fair or carnival. That comes into town for a few days. Keep going. Utilities. That exemption would would not apply in critical areas, so. You know, if the city was doing utility work. It would have to in in critical areas, it would have to go. File a CIPA. Keep going, please. And there's a long sort of description there of the different utility activities. Recreation, development of recreational sites, you'd have to get a CIPA for that in critical areas. So. Anyways, we basically what we did is we significantly narrowed down the list of. Exemptions that don't apply in critical areas. So that's that's the recommendation on that one.
I don't, in your, in your red line of the code, I don't see how you've done that.
Sarah, if you can scroll up to. It's right after the staff report here.
The actual code, yeah, here.
So we talked about eighteen three ten zero ninety, that's flexible thresholds. Keep going down, Sarah. This would be right here. Yeah, two thirty five. So it says, I guess, let's take it from the top. What we're proposing to say is that. Within the city of La Center, specific categorical exemptions enumerated in WAC one ninety seven eleven nine oh eight and further specified. You know, in this section will not apply in. And then it goes into the list of critical area in the following critical areas. And and buffers, wetlands, frequently flooded areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and geologically hazardous areas. And then if you go down to item three. It says pursuant to WAC one ninety seven eleven nine oh eight two, the following proposal is not withstanding the categorical exemptions allowed under. One ninety seven eleven eight hundred may be subject to review. Under this chapter, if the proposal is subject to subsection two of the second minor new construction described in WAC one ninety seven eleven eight hundred one. And then. The second item there, item B, the construction or designation of bus stops, loading zones, shelters, access facilities, plotlines. From eight hundred two. Everything else would still be exempt in critical areas. Maybe I said it the wrong way the first time, but so so these two things would you would have to get a CIPA for in critical areas, but the other things you would not.
So all those other things listed in the WAC would not be subject to exemption.
Correct.
It's only these two things that we've picked, minor new construction and.
No, 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 sorry, I'm confusing myself now. These are the two things that you would have to get. That would not be exempt in critical areas, that you would have to get CIPAs for. All that other stuff, you would not have to get exemptions for.
And why did we pick?
Have to get a CIPA for.
Yeah, so why did we pick those two as requiring CIPA as out of that list of. Quite a few things out of the WAC.
Yeah, I mean, some of the list of the things in the WAC, like repair and maintenance, I mean, you know, the impacts of repair and maintenance are fairly minor. Usually, so we just didn't see a reason to make somebody go get a CIPA for that stuff. And then purchase and sale of property, I just don't think it makes sense for somebody to have to. Get a CIPA to sell their property. And even if it's in critical areas. And then you start getting into some of the like public work stuff like utilities where. If you're developing in critical areas, it's going to trigger a critical areas permit anyways. And so most of the impacts and issues associated with. With doing that work in critical areas are covered by a different type of permit. So that that's the basic justification for. Not including those items on this list and therefore making not not making people go get a CIPA for. For it is that you have another permit process, a critical areas permit that would cover most of the impacts. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I didn't study this whole list of that you have highlighted in yellow, but there seems to be. It seems to be a lot of things here. We've picked two of them.
Yeah. I mean, I guess there's a couple of things we can do. Allow you to take a little bit longer to look at the list, you know, until next month. I mean, this isn't a public hearing anyway, so we're not, it's not like we're. You know, sent trying to forward this on or anything, but. Give you a little bit longer to take a look at the list. And see if you think some of those things should require CIPA. Would keeping in mind that. There's a critical areas permit process anyways. So if you undertake some of those activities like underground utilities. Aren't all the impacts really covered by critical areas anyways, because all the other sections of the CIPA. Earth, water. Housing. Are. You know, don't necessarily come in. You know, don't necessarily come into, into play outside of critical areas issues, there's no, there's no housing issues from placing in an underground, you know, a city underground utility if the city was engaging in a utility project. Generally, so it's, it's trying to smooth the process again and focus on the things that have the most impact. And, and only sending those through the SEPA process.
Okay, I, I've done a quick scan of this, you know, I guess I don't see anything that pops out that I, I would object to not including, so I think I'm okay with what you're recommending here, I do have. Aside from that one question. Sarah, can you scroll up to the top of it, right there? You talk about the following critical areas and associated buffers. And we're crossing out a lot of things that were there before. Are, are those things we've crossed out all inclusive of the things we've left there? Like I always thought floodways and flood paths were very specific definition. Repairing areas, I know that's a specific definition, is there some reason leaving those?
Yeah. So the reason that we did this was to standardize the language of critical areas with the critical areas ordinance, and so you might remember, or maybe you don't, that there's five main types of critical areas, and those are you know, pretty much defined and used universally across the state. And those five types are listed here. And so the, you know, these, these categories have listed encompass most of these other ones I've crossed out, so fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas includes repairing areas, habitat for threatened or endangered species, local habitat conservation areas. So it's really just kind of standardizing the language across the city's code in comparison with and, and matching it up with the critical areas ordinance. But the second reason is, if you look real close here, it also says historic and archaeological resources. Which are not a critical area, that's not. You know, that just doesn't qualify as a critical area as, as the state defines that. So we took that off for that reason, and the rest of it is pretty much just standardizing the language. The one critical area we left out here though. Are critical aquifer recharge areas. And the reason that we did that is because all, pretty much all of the city and most of Clark County is a critical aquifer recharge area, it's a sole source aquifer called the Trout Dell Aquifer. And so if you, you know, if the effect of this whole section here is to list out the activities where people have to get a SEPA. If it's in critical areas, and since the, pretty much the entire city is a critical aquifer recharge area, basically you'd be saying that no exemptions apply in critical areas. So we didn't list that one out for that specific reason. Cause that, that would make this section essentially have no effect.
Yeah, I'm, as you probably know, I'm big on standardizing definitions, so if that's what you're doing here, I'm good with that.
Yep.
What protections do we have for historic and archaeological resources, do you know?
Yeah, there's. In 18360, there's an archaeological protection code. That was written like maybe around 2010 or 11. So that protects archaeological resources, but the city doesn't have any protection of historic resources like buildings. And that's pretty common. You know, most cities don't have any protection for historic resources. That might be something the city wants to consider in the future. But there really isn't any protection for historic resources.
Can you add that to our list?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something that the city should consider, and I mean, it would really be targeted toward things that are on a state, a state or federal register. Like for instance, some of the buildings in downtown La Center that kind of give La Center its character aren't listed on state or national registers, but they still might be significant for the community if they were removed or modified. So, yeah, we could add that to the list.
I, I think the cleanup of this language is good, I think I'm with Dennis on this where I'm okay with it, and I, I'm also a big fan of keeping the definitions the same to avoid, avoid conflict in the future.
Sounds good.
So. We could send this to a public hearing next month if you're comfortable with it. And you would then have, you know, until next month to sort of take a second look at this. And after the public hearing, if there's changes you want to make, we can, and they're not, you know, there's not a really long list of them, we could handle it that way. Or we could talk about it another month if, if you want, just the month to review it. But, so, so those are kind of your options, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with moving this forward to a public hearing in January.
Same.
I would agree.
Yeah, I apologize, this is a little bit dry and hard to follow. We, you know, just kind of going back to the beginning of this project, really the reason to, to do this was just to kind of clean up this portion of the city's code, and the SEPA is something that the city goes through, you know, quite, quite a bit, most projects require a SEPA, so it didn't, ends up kind of being relatively important to to, to the city, even though even though it's a little bit hard to understand. Okay, any other questions or comments on this topic?
You're doing all the hard work, it makes sense out of this.
Indeed.
Yeah, one of our planners, Sam Rubin, helped me out with it, so he owes. He's owed quite a bit of the credit, but. Okay.
Okay, so then we have new business or?
We need a motion to push this to a public hearing.
Yeah, you know, that, that, let's go ahead and do that motion, that wouldn't be a bad one to have on the record.
So yes, can I have a motion to push the SEPA code updates to a public hearing in second week of January?
So moved.
And seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to move SEPA code updates to the January, second week of January, planning commission meeting. Okay, sorry, new business, or what's next on our list, Ethan?
I, I don't think there's any new business on the agenda. So the, the next thing is the community development report.
I was thinking more in terms of going for the next, what, what are we going to work on after we get done with?
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, so that's kind of the discussion of the next regular agenda, right?
Yeah, we can wait until then, I guess.
Sarah's pulling something up here on the screen. So I, I think what she's pulling up is the list of things from a couple of months back that we were sort of starting to work our way through, and we did items one and seven. Item one, building height, item seven, SEPA exemptions, where, you know, that, that one's kind of winding down. So I think what the, my recommendation was last month was to start working on the archaeological resource protection code. As I mentioned earlier, that was developed, I guess it was 2012. But there's been quite a bit of advance, I guess, if you will, at the state level in terms of how archaeological resources are protected. And I think it's kind of in the interest of the city to take a look at that again, because if somebody impacts a resource, then that's a potential liability for the city. And so the city really needs to be kind of aligned with best practice for protecting those resources. The archaeological code you have now, is it bad? I'm not saying that, but it could just use a tune-up. So that'd be kind of the next topic I would recommend taking on.
What about parking too, since we have a lot of?
Yeah, we talked about parking, that'd be a good one, we could maybe move those two items forward, parking and archaeological resources, it's kind of hard to work on more than two at a time. To be honest with you, because it makes for agendas that are a little bit too full, but. So, yeah, those two would be good, you could talk about the master land use table, that'd be a really long one that would take quite a bit of time, you know, six months or more to kind of get that completely ironed out.
Maybe we should attack on February, the master land use table? Parking and archaeological in January, February, and then start master land use. Actually, yeah.
Depending on where we're at with parking and archaeology and how long that takes. We could move into the master land use table fairly quickly thereafter.
That sounds good, so maybe we can order those and order what we're, how we're going to attack them.
Yeah, Sarah, it might be good in the minutes to capture this discussion, basically that the priority would be parking and archaeology. And then the master land use table.
I have that noted, thank you.
Okay. Does that cover the, I think that probably covers the new business item.
I think so, does everybody agree with that too? Mr. Alka Sherry and Ms. Robert.
I do, I'm good with that.
One thing, you know, I've kind of been thinking in the back of my head here, just kind of throwing this out there in front of the commission. We've been kind of focused on these real surgical updates to the code, eliminating conflicts and making sure the code is consistent throughout, you know, and that's important. I don't want to sort of leave the bigger picture behind though. And so it might be good to, at some point, have a discussion about some, some of what that bigger picture is. There's a 2025 comprehensive plan update deadline for the city. And the city's going to start getting ready for that, you know, as early as next year, start kind of working on some of that. But my only point is that it'd be good to think about kind of what the purpose of zoning and development codes and planning really is, which is to guide the development in, in form of, of development in La Center. And so at some point, we, it might be good to have a discussion about whether we think the code and the city's regulations are giving us the community that La Center, you know, wants and needs. And, and so that's kind of the bigger picture of, of planning that we haven't really been focusing on, and so I don't know what the receptivity would be of the planning commission to having that kind of a discussion sometime. Personally, I feel that those kind of bigger picture issues. Where land uses are located, what they look like. What type of land uses the city is trying to attract are a little more interesting, I guess, if you will, than some of the surgical code updates, even though the the surgical code updates are, are important still, but so some, some point, we may need to have that discussion as well.
Yeah, Ethan, I think that would be particularly applicable to the junction, you know, we've apparently been getting some pushback from various people on that section of code, I, I still think it's good code, but you know, in that context, it might be worth revisiting it for that particular section of our city.
Yes, I agree with that, and I think the junction code is worth looking at again as, you know, as well as as well as some of the other development regulations. So should we move into the community development report?
That sounds good.
So Heritage Building B is finishing up, I guess, if you will, they're kind of trying to get occupancy. So they're working on some of their final items like landscaping and signage. But they haven't quite gotten across the finish line yet. The middle school, Sarah, have we given them permanent occupancy yet?
No, not yet, I know it's going to come soon, I think there's just a few small things they have, have left, and I think I remember hearing that they're going to do this over the kids' Christmas break. So hopefully, maybe like in January, we can give it to them, but I'm not 100% sure, so don't, don't quote me on that.
Yeah, they have some small stuff left there as well to do, just real minor items to check out the list. I know that all my planning items were checked off for occupancy, but they're working on a few other things. And then Sarah, you had you had a pretty good update the other day in, in one of our internal meetings about minute management. Do you want to give that update? I think that would be, probably be interesting to the commission.
Yeah, so whatever minute, minute, sorry, minute management dropped off the, it's like a fuel canopy, which is just like the fuel island. And then the convenience store, I asked the gentleman that dropped it off. And I asked them if they were planning on doing the convenience store first, or if they were planning on doing the hotel first. And he told me that at that time, that they were planning on doing the convenience store and the fuel canopy, and I believe they wanted to do the fuel canopy first. I think I've heard that they put the hotel kind of on hold just because I think they needed some more funding, because all of the lumber prices and other materials have really gone up this year, so I think that's why that one kind of got pushed back. We, let's see, I, I need one more item for the fuel canopy from the applicant. And then that can go back into review, and then honestly, that should go out pretty quick once we get that. Then the convenience store, I'm trying to remember, I think that one. That one is waiting on the applicant, because I believe they've produced comments back to them, like our consultants did. And then on the Hampton, I know that one's definitely just been turned in, I think maybe three weeks ago, a month ago, they submitted more plans for review and, and answered the comments that the consultants had. So I think that kind of covers it all, do you guys have any questions, I might know some answers?
I think that covers most of what I had, anybody else?
I just wanted her to give you that update, because you know, that product, that product was permitted. project was permitted May of two thousand twenty, went through planning review, and then it kind of just went on a slow track. So, you know, there's been a lot of people in the community wondering what's going on with, with that, that property, and so I just wanted you to have that update.
How long is that, how long is that permit good for?
Um, it's good for two years, and then they can get two one-year extensions. Um, and it sounds like, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What, what was permitted?
Uh, so this is, this is the Shell site, right? The gas station site at the junction, they, it was a hundred and one-room hotel. Kind of located at the northeast corner of that site. At the southeast corner of the site, closest to La Center Road, was a convenience store and Fuel Island. Um, and then the southwest corner of that site was a multi-tenant commercial building. And then the far northwest was gonna be a drive-through restaurant.
So that was all permitted in a single permit, even though they were gonna do it in phases?
Yep, singles, site plan review and conditional use permit application. Um, and then, so I'm looking at Highland Terrace here, which is item nine on the list, um, and so that project has been going on since two thousand six, they're doing grading out there, Dennis, you've probably seen it. Um, they're, they're grading and building utilities and, and roads and so forth. So they're going through the final plat process right now, so the city's reviewing their final plat documents, and so probably within a couple of weeks or so, they'll be issued final plat approval, and then at that point, they can go record the plat with the county and sell lots. And, and or build on the lots, and I, from what I understand, Evergreen Homes is gonna be building some of the homes on those lots. Uh, but they're gonna sell some of the lots to other builders. See, go ahead and scroll down here, Sarah. Uh, let's see, Riverside, I mean, really kind of the only thing going on there right now is the Phase Four Park. We just gave them final site plan approval after three rounds of plan review on that, and so you should start seeing park improvements going in there um, in the not-too-distant future.
From what I can make out, it looks like all the, at least initial grading has been done, there's a big flat area where the park's gonna go.
Yeah.
And then, uh, the other thing to note, the um they've been grading for the apartments. And this week, they've been paving the parking lot, so they're, they're moving ahead pretty rapidly with the apartment complex.
Yeah. Um, Stevens Hillside Farms, we had a pre-op with them oh, I don't know, a month or so ago, and they pretty quickly turned around, and they, they've filed an application for post-decision review for that subdivision that was approved in two thousand eighteen, so they're going to change the design of that subdivision. Still, would be the same number of lots, it would still have a park, it would still have the exact same critical areas impacts, but in general, kind of what's going on is they're trying to eliminate some of the north-south roads on that site because those were requiring so much cut going into the hillsides. And so they've sort of reconfigured that a little bit to have two east-west streets and fewer north-south streets, um, but it would still be the same number of lots, so we're gonna be review, reviewing that again, um, and, and for, for changes to that two thousand eighteen subdivision. Um, let's see here. Oh, the Fudge Property, that's wish, that's not happening anymore, that's the Dairy Property up at the Junction. They were trying to create two lots. Or adjust their two existing lots, I should say, one to leave um, a ten-acre piece for the Fudge prop, Fudge House. Um, and then a larger parcel that, um, you know, presumably was gonna be for development. They decided not to go through the city's process anymore on that, there's a state process they can go through for a large lot subdivision, which doesn't even have to get, undergo city review. Um, and I think they're gonna take that route instead because there was a question about the legality of those lots. And then the last thing on the list here is the Tapany, oh, sorry.
I want to understand that, so somebody can go do a boundary line adjustment without the city's concurrence?
What, what they can do is they can go through what's called a large lot subdivision with the state, and as long as each lot ends up being larger than twenty acres. Um, I think this is how it works. I've only seen it like one other time before. As long as each lot meets these minimum size requirements, then they can just go file the file the plat with the county and record it, and you don't even have to go through city review.
Okay, so it's, it's just, it's just a boundary line adjustment, it's nothing beyond that. And the development still has to go through the city.
Yes, yeah. Um, and then the last thing on the list here is the Tapany Carlson Commercial project, which is um what they're calling a rockery, so that's within the junction. Located on a piece of property along Paradise Park Road, kind of like midway down um, through the junction area, um, kind of hard to describe without pointing at the map, I guess, Sarah, maybe we could point it out on the map that follows this. Um, so it's, it's number twenty-one there. Which I actually think it, isn't it further down than that, Sarah? I don't think that's accurate. It's kind of where your arrow was there, below twenty-one, a couple parcels, but.
That was my initial reaction too, I thought it was lower as well, so I was thinking because it, I think it's somewhere right around here, because I think this section is that wider area where, where I think they were kind of planning.
Yeah, I think it's that parcel that's right below, it's right, right below your, there, right below your cursor. Yep, I think it's that one, um, they're proposing to put in a, a landscaping uh, landscaping supply business, essentially what it is, so they would sell rock and bark and soil and that type of stuff. And have a, have a trailer, you know, a job shack where people can go pay, and so you would pull your, your pickup in or whatever and get loaded up with get your pickup loaded with uh, materials and then drive off. So we had a pre-op with them, there's some questions about that project and whether they'd be, what type of improvements they would be required to make. Um, because they're wanting to file for a tempor, a temporary use permit to establish that use, because, you know, it's essentially just piles of material. Um, so there's some questions about what other improvements they might need to make there. Um, as well as what.
So, I'm under our older code. That use is allowed?
Uh, yes, yeah, there's a, there's a, a use category called lumber and other building materials, which is kind of the closest use category that, you know, kind of fits that description. Um, and it's a permitted use. But yeah, the question is what process do they need to go through, and what type of improvements do they need to make?
And that certainly doesn't come anywhere close to matching our current approved uses out there. Do you know how Skip got that development agreement? What was the circumstances behind that?
I wish I could say, I just don't know, Dennis, I have zero background on it, other than knowing it exists and that, um, you know, it did go through city council approval um, back in two thousand eleven, but that's kind of the extent of it, I, we went looking in the files for you know, the staff report and that kind of stuff, and we couldn't find anything describing the development agreement, or, you know, the background, or why they were doing it.
Yeah, I never heard of it.
Sorry, what's that?
Yeah, I never heard about that, I don't remember hearing anything about it.
Yeah, it covers most of the junction. Um, invested in the code from two thousand eleven, it expires two thousand twenty-six. Um, for the landscaping supply business, they only want to stay for three years, and so, you know, in that case it really doesn't have any impact, so to speak, on the sort of build-out of the junction, because their intent would be to be gone. But then a few years in there, you know, there wouldn't be sort of like a a permanent building and improvements that don't comply with the junction code, so tho, those are kind of the issues that we're talking about right now with them.
Well, I just wondered, my, my thought is, is would it be worth some kind of renegotiations with Skip? The, I, you know, he owns most of that property out there, south of La Center Road. And if he starts putting things in there that you know, don't match our vision, and you know, we're, we're wasting our time putting these trying to build these codes that match what we think.
You know, we have a vision. I mean, I think, yeah, I think it is a good discussion, and I think the negotiation would be you know, basically a financial incentive in terms of the city providing some utilities and perhaps road improvements to some of those properties. Um, in exchange for having the, um, uh, what am I trying to say? Getting rid, essentially getting rid of that development agreement.
So I, I think that's something that ought to be brought to Mayor's attention and see if he would support something like that, I, I don't know who would do that negotiations, but it would be somebody obviously in the city staff.
Yeah. Well, and it's a good time to, for the city to be thinking about getting money for infrastructure, you know, related to the National Infrastructure Bill. Water and, and broadband in particular, I think two things that you can get funding for. So you're right, it's a good discussion to have, um, I'll raise it with the mayor and Jeff.
There might be some incentive that Skip would take to invalidate that development agreement.
That's the word I was looking for, but couldn't invalidate. So, uh, that was the last thing on the list, the, there's one thing on the li, uh, one thing not on the list. We also recently received a pre-application request for what is, what they're calling La Center Heights. And it would be a multifamily residential development there in Timmin Landing overlooking the river and, um, in, in that area that's zoned mixed-use. And so, there's probably gonna be a pre-application meeting in early January for that. Um, hasn't, we haven't landed on a date yet. But I think it's, what is it, Sarah, it's like about a hundred and eighty multifamily residential units?
Yes, I think that's what it was, and I think it was like eighteen buildings, does that sound right?
Yeah. And so we've talked about that area in general, and I think we had, um somebody come give public comment about it. And so their proposal doesn't comply with the city's code because it would exceed the density that's permitted in that area, so one of the things they're proposing to do is change the city's code to, to allow for that, and so that is, that type of application, um, a zoning code text amendment is something that has to be considered by the planning commission and, and the city council. So that's an application that's gonna come in front of you. A privately sponsored zoning code text amendment to change the medium-density residential zone, which is referenced into that mixed-use zone. Change the medium-density residential zone to allow for, uh, greater density essentially, and, and to, to transfer density out of critical areas, I think is what they're wanting to do. And, and then also allow for larger clusters of, of units, and so you know, that'll be a, that'll be a, a discussion that we'll have with, with you and with them present.
So does that make that a type four review then? Or is it just so that the code change would be an integral part of the development approval?
Uh, yeah, I mean, they'd have to have that zoning text amendment approved before we would accept an application for site plan review and subdivision for the, you know, to, to, to permit the the, the development.
Because that's obviously gonna be a you know, question for the city council to address is is, is that kind of density in keeping with the kinds of things we want to allow in the city?
Yep. And.
Recuse myself from that conversation, just, so we'll have to make sure we have enough people for corn.
Does that involve your property?
Uh, my property's in mixed-use, so I mean, it's not part of the development, but the zoning change first would be applicable to my property, so.
Good.
I have the description, just so, um, all the commissioners know, it's to construct a one hundred and eighty-unit multifamily apartment with eighteen apartment buildings and community center. And it looks like it's gonna be for twelve point ninety-eight acres.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I don't have anything else. I guess there's a few other things on the agenda here.
Okay, um, do you have any plans, Commissioner, and alternate comments? Mr. Alkashari, anything that you wanted to bring up?
Uh, no, I'm good for now, thank you.
Mr. Deborah?
Well, thank you.
Okay, um, I did have, um comments, and Sarah, you can help me with this, I guess we're, we'll be putting out another notice to try and fill our alternate positions. Uh, coming up in the next month or two, it sounds like, Sarah?
Yes, that is correct, um, I'm planning on contacting the newspaper tomorrow. Um, so I don't know when it'll be published exactly, because I don't know, I think there's gonna be somebody there that can write a brief article. Uh, so that way, it's not just an advertisement, it can also be maybe somewhere else in the paper, so it, it'll catch a few more eyes. Um, but I'll probably do that for at least two weeks. That'll give people enough time to see it, and then submit their applications. So that's pretty much all I've got so far, but that is the plan.
Okay, and is that, are you gonna send an email out to like the former um, city council members, and then the people that had applied to, um, or ran for city council?
I probably can, I'll double-check with the mayor, but I'm sure that's totally fine.
All right, and then for next regular agenda, we are always supposed to, uh, vote printing officers at the end of December, and we didn't have that on the agenda, that was my god. So we'll postpone that, hopefully till January. Also, my commission expires at the end of December, so I don't know if I'll be here or not on January, depends on the mayor.
Yeah, Dana, so we actually did think about the election of officers. Yeah, Dana, so we actually did think about the election of officers thing. I mean, the planning commission rules and procedures say that that should happen every December. But we knew that the mayor was thinking about appointing a couple of alternates. And so we think it might just be better to wait until the alternates are seated to have the election of officers. So that's why we didn't put on this month's agenda. And depending on how, you know, how long that takes, it may get pushed another month or two at least. So that, yeah, that was kind of what we were thinking there.
Okay.
Can we go back? I guess I do have a comment. I'm just thinking about that Timman Road thing. Ethan, what is the status of our revised development agreement code?
It's needs to still get scheduled for city council. And so the intent is to put that in front of the city council either the first or second meeting in January.
Yeah, because I, I would like to make sure that we have that code in place before we start committing to anything in Timman Road. Because I'd like to use that. Obviously, that development is going to need a development agreement.
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, it may or may not. Bronson might recommend that it does because of the scale of the development. But there's, I mean, there's nothing automatically requiring them to file for a development agreement.
Well, I guess they were coming in and asking for code changes. Now, I guess the approach they're taking is they're wanting not a code change to a development agreement. They want a physical change to our city code.
Yep.
I guess I'm, I'm just thinking ahead. I would expect that the city would get some benefit to that.
Right, yeah. I mean, if they're gonna do something like that, I think what you're seeing is maybe it's better to recommend they go through a development agreement and then get some benefits from them for it.
Yeah, anyway, I think that's just highlights important for getting that development code revisioned.
Yeah, I agree. It needs to get on a near-term agenda.
And before we move on too far, I just wanted to give a couple of updates because Chairperson McLean had asked me a couple of things. So I wanted to get back to you on the Safe Routes for School grant. We did not get that grant, but we did get a Transportation Alternative Program grant. And that's regulated through the RTC. The grant is a design grant. And it's going to be used to create a shared-use path on Pacific Highway between Riverside and Case subdivision. I think it doesn't really have a timeline, but Tony kept saying that it's regulated by Washdott's local programs. So I think what he was getting at was that we have to meet all the criteria that they're requesting. And then we can keep moving forward with it. So then the other thing is we'll have to find a design firm. So that's, I think, the first step that we have to get through. But Tony, I believe, was saying we're going to start doing something with that in January. So that'll, that'll probably start soon. And then the other thing was, we've had a couple of calls from the Headleys about Pollock Park, or not Pollock Park, sorry, Pollock Road on your way down to Pollock Park. I guess there's a section that has a little bit of erosion where the dirt was kind of getting into the roadway. So Tony is going to, I believe, get a geotech at some point. So I know we can't do any of the work during the wet season, but he said it would likely be summer when, if the geotech says that we need to do something with it, then we would do the work in that point. But that's everything.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw they did some cleanup over there. Sounds good. But, and I think he did say the geotech looked at it once already and felt that it was more erosion than a landslide. Yeah, we could keep an eye out. Let's see. I think that's all I have for today. Any other questions or comments for tonight? Oh, next regular meeting attendance. So on the, it'll be January, looks like 12th, or no, sorry, January 11th. Is everybody on the call? Are you able to attend the meeting? Do we know yet?
I will. I'm, I'm good. That's sure.
Commissioner, no problem.
Yes, I can, I will be there.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. And I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. You know, so, yeah, and I just want to say thank you to everybody for your hard work this year and enjoy the holidays.
Good night, everyone. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Take care.